Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 25, 2017, Meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We have our first item on the agenda would be public participation. Mr. Mayo?
No one has signed in, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Our next item on the agenda would be approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting from September 11, 2017. There are motions.
So second.
Moving to second and in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Poshed. Thank you very much. Public hearing, scheduled public hearing for tax classification. Mr. Mayo?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that is our annual setting of the tax rate. I'm speaking with Victor, our assessor. We'd like to set that for October 16 at 7:30.
October 16 at 7:30. Need a motion now?
Yep, need a motion.
So I'll entertain a motion to set the public hearing for the tax classification to October 16 at 7:30.
So move to second.
Moving to second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda would be licenses and permits. There is a Class II license request from Elite Auto Service LLC 363-369-NOT-AV.
Mr. Chairman, Attorney McGrath is waiting for his client, has his schedule to be here. I suggest you skip over him.
Let's table that for the time being. Okay, let's move on to the first item on presentation, action items. Let us move to the age-friendly community. And just have the announcement, please, of Paul.
Yep. Good evening. Thank you for having us here this evening. Sitting here with me is Valerie Spain of AARP.
Thank you.
And also in the audience, a little camera shy, two members of our board, Liz Ellis and Judy Camelia.
Thank you.
They're also here in support of this measure. I'll get right to the point of this here, but we are asking the board for their support to pursue entry into the AARP World Health Organization Network of Age-Friendly Communities. They do a lot of good things here in town, but there's always room for improvement, and I think this is one of them where we could improve. And I also think that this fits nicely with the awalkable communities and livable communities than what you're doing with Paul Revis.
Yes.
So at this point, I'll just hand it off to Valerie Spain here.
Welcome, Valerie.
Hi. Is this good enough? Can people hear me? Can people hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. All right, fine. So I did give you guys some handouts, but you can, you don't need to necessarily follow along with me. It's information you can keep for later.
Thank you.
Also, a book that highlights various age-friendly communities across the country. But the World Health Organization started the Age-Friendly Global Network in response to a growing demographic of increasing aging population globally and a move to cities. And then AARP became an affiliate in the U.S. for the world, for Age-Friendly in the United States. And they basically took what the World Health Organization is doing, and they created a five-year continuous cycle of improvement. By the way, I am not going to follow these specific, you know, word by word, so don't, I'm making it short.
Thank you.
So created a continuous cycle of improvement, five years. Communities apply online, and they get a letter from their town managers, mayors, or mayor, and then they apply, and they have two years then to come up with an action plan. The action plan draws from the community. You're the best thing, most, what communities do, they do assessments and surveys and listening sessions with a focus on their older constituents, but also the idea of age-friendly is really all ages, so it, you want to bring everyone to the table who is, many people to the table, not just older adults, you want to bring, because there's an intergenerational component. The age-friendly process focuses on eight domains, and there, it's in, the eight domains fall into three different categories, which is built environment, social environment, and municipal services. So built environment is outdoor spaces, transportation, and housing. Social environment is social participation, respect, and civic participation. And municipal services is communication and community support and health services. Communities are, many communities like yourselves are already doing a work that's age-friendly, like your Complete Streets initiatives or Main Street. I don't, I have to say, I don't know specifically what you're doing, but I know you're doing a number of things. Just about every community that's interested in this age-friendly framework is doing this work, and they use the framework as a way to really cohesively bring together what they're doing, and it's a great way to present it to people, plus there are some resources connected with this work. Already, AARP has about a quarter of cities and towns in Massachusetts have signed up to be age-friendly communities, and there's a slide that shows a number of them. Berkshire County came in as a region, and Acton is, there's also a region of the Metropolitan Planning Council that's 13 cities and towns in the Acton area that are also very interested in doing it, and we're seeing an interest in people working regionally, because problems that communities have don't stop at the town line. They continue, whether you have a regional transit system and that sort of thing. So the process is that a community, as I said, you sign up, you get two years to come up with an action plan, you submit an action plan to AARP, and it's reviewed by our national office, and folks from the WHO, you get great feedback about anything that you want to do. You're really, the encouragement is to do whatever works for you. You don't have to do all eight domains, you can choose one. You can choose one project, one domain, and the idea is that you set up things for yourself to do that you can accomplish and reach, and then it's a continuous cycle of improvement after you have three years then to implement that action plan. So I work, AARP, the age-friendly, I work very closely with Tufts Health Plan Foundation and dementia-friendly. So there's this synergy across the state, it's very, there's a ton of interest, there's a lot of growth happening. And we also encourage people, you may have heard of dementia-friendly initiative, we encourage cities and towns that are interested in doing this to do them together, because there's a lot of assessments and surveys that go along with both of those programs. So instead of assessing and surveying and listening to people double time, you're doing it at the same time, and plus, your communities that choose to be age-friendly are not necessarily dementia-friendly. So you want to have dementia-friendly at the table, they would be one of your constituents. There's a number of statistics back here towards the end of the slide deck that shows a lot of statistics that talk about how valuable older adults are to the economy. Age-friendly also addresses ageism, and the, and also is the idea of across the lifespan of really looking at your projects and your issues across the lifespan, and seeing people as, everybody has different abilities, and some people want to be very active as they age, some people have issues and whatever, and they, and everybody needs to be accommodated. And so I think the most important thing probably for most folks is resources that come with this. So AARP just finished a series of, an RFP of community challenge grants, and they put, it was nationwide. Communities did not have to be in the AARP network of livable communities, they could simply be doing any project that is considered a livable communities project, so you could have talked about your Main Street project. And 1,200 across the country applied, 40 in Massachusetts applied, and they went, we wound up giving out, I think, two to three grants from Massachusetts. Next year, AARP plans to double the pot of money that they did this year. Also, the Tufts Health Plan Foundation almost exclusively funds age-friendly work, and Metro West Foundation is also now putting, this year they're going to be putting $40,000 towards age-friendly initiatives. Cities and towns that are in the network in Massachusetts, well, nationwide, we offer quarterly webinars with a lot of technical assistance in those quarterly webinars, we have a conference, I do technical assistance, I connect people with technical assistance, there's a lot of toolkits online, and we're developing a toolkit. Well, there's, we already are doing, but we're actually, what am I, what do I want to say? We're consolidating our toolkit so that people, communities can just, you know, get that soup to nuts. This is how you start an action plan, this is how you bring people together to talk about your project. And I think that's it. I think I covered everything, actually, so far, trying to be as succinct as possible. So anybody who has any questions, you can also call.
It looks like it's like a five-year cycle, you get two years, or at least it's three years after you submit your plan.
Action plan, yeah.
So who develops the action plan in the town of Wakefield? Who's kind of responsible or takes it on?
It would be me. Well, me and a group, we would have a group of people. The board, our board is really into this, they would, you know, like to go ahead with this, that's why we're here, for your support. But we would probably do surveys, like Valerie said, community forums to get feedback, we'd come up with a committee of different people, I've already talked to a few people, I spoke to Steve about this, Paul Revis, Dan McGrath in Recreation, Anthony Guardia, the Housing Authority, Department of Health, you know, those people trying to hit the right people. I haven't hit up the schools yet, but those are the players, you know, where it's all ages, so we're looking for.
No, that sounds great. In fact, that is one of the things I was going to suggest, is maybe go to the schools for help and have young kids get involved with this.
Right, a lot of intergenerational.
Just to make the connection and not to mention the free labor, but.
Well, one of the domains covers intergenerational, you know, inclusion, so that's a big part of the work, too. I always say, I really do emphasize age-friendly is all ages, and a lot of communities that have chosen to do it, they're, they'll say Lexington for all ages, or whatever, they really make a point of saying that.
And then what actually, so it looks like there's, you put your plan in, and then we say, here's what we're going to do, somebody says, that's great, and then we have to submit a progress report, and then someday we get the gold star that says, you did it.
Right, at the end of those three years.
What type of progress do you have to make, though, for like, you know, housing? Is it, do we have to?
It's totally.
Not have to, but what meets the bar?
It's totally customizable.
Is it?
Absolutely. So the idea is really to look at what you've done, it's not necessarily to create something new. I mean, if there are objectives that you want to reach, of course, but if you're already doing things and you want to move them forward, then make that part of your plan, and then have actionable steps that you can actually, so that you reach goals. We're not looking, we don't, we don't have any investment in you saying you're going to do something that's way over there and not reaching that goal. I think it's a, it's a way of letting people know what you're doing, your community letting them know what you're doing, and getting people interested and excited. I, as I do more of these presentations, I just, it just generates a lot of interest and excitement.
What do you think about developing a 140-ish unit assisted living facility right next to our downtown?
Yeah. Sounds like a rather testy subject like that.
Well, we said, she said you can report on what you're doing, not new things, and it's not open yet, so I think that's, I just think it's relevant. It's actually, that was, you know, part of the genesis of the whole assisted living bylaw that we created here in town was, we took a look at people in town and said, if you are people who like to age in place, and maybe they can't, it required you to move out of Wakefield if, for the most part, if you wanted to, you know, to have an environment like that, and there was no option in town, and that was painful for people. So there wasn't, you know, there was an intent here to actually accommodate residents in Wakefield so they could do something like aging in place.
Well, every, every city and town, everybody says, I want to age in place, and if I can't age in my home, I want to age in my community.
Yes.
I want to have transportation that'll get me to where I want to go. I want to be able to walk place, I want to be able to be active. Everybody is talking about these things. So it's also a way to share ideas and information, because people, I do, people do network and talk to each other about what they're doing. And so it's also helpful to work in concert at times with other communities, because, as I said, these issues don't necessarily stop at the town line.
Right, right. Well, that's, like I said, that's, that's why we did it, and in the location we did it was, we wanted to find a place where all of those things were met, on a, on public transportation, you know, bus line, commuter rail, local access to all the downtown restaurants and shops and places like that, and certainly in the community where people have, you know, called home for years, it makes, it's a big deal. So, great, thanks.
Yeah.
And Nelson, is that? I think the program should do very well in this community. Do you have AD costs right now across the state? Is that what you said earlier?
We have.
A quarter of?
Yeah, about, about a quarter of the state.
And they're under all the various levels?
Yes, there's, and there's a lot of emerging communities, so Acton is an emerging, that group, that region is an emerging region. So there's, as I said, there's about a quarter of the state is actually in the network, and then they are in different stages, and then there's a whole bunch of, I get calls all the time, all these other communities that want to be part of the network, too.
So tonight, you're seeking our endorsement, is that it?
Yes, that's what I need to go forward.
And there's no fee to join.
There's no fee, it's free? It's all free?
Excellent.
We wouldn't pay to pay.
Oh, well, okay.
Mr. Nelson.
First off, I think it's a phenomenal program, I think it's great for the entire community, not just our seniors, but certainly with a focus on our seniors. For the communities that have done it, what have you found have been the challenges or the pitfalls that we should be aware of or be mindful of in going into this?
I think getting, a couple things. One is getting as many folks at the table who are part of this, and that includes your Chamber of Commerce, you know, and especially planners, and if you're doing a strategic plan, I don't know what your, where your city and town is with that. And then it's having a backbone organization or group that is really going to guide the work so that people are keeping track of where, you know, what benchmarks you're trying to reach. But I would really say, and also assessing the resources that you have, and really tailoring what you're doing to your community and that meets your needs so that you can actually have wins along the way. But I would also say to really look at, we always talk about the unusual suspects, so I don't know who the unusual suspects are in necessarily in your community, but to make sure there's also equity and that you're reaching all groups at the table.
Excellent, thank you. Any further comments from the board? I'll entertain a motion to approve the request before us from Judy and.
A move.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Poshed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this moment, I'd like to go back to the minutes, please. We skipped over the approval of the executive minutes of September 11, 2017.
Will be accepted executive minutes from September 11, 2017.
A second? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Let us go to the, back to Class II license of Elite Auto Services LLC 363-369-NOT-AV. Mr. McGrath.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrath, with offices at 599 North Avenue in Wakefield. I'm here representing the applicant for this matter, Elite Auto Service LLC. With me tonight is Michael Colombo. Michael is the member of the LLC and the sole principal of the LLC. Michael is in the process of acquiring the property known and numbered as 363 to 369 North Avenue. It's the current home of McNeil's Auto Repair across from Veterans Field on, on North Avenue. To give the board some background on the property as it exists today might be helpful. I represented Mr. McNeil going back to 2013 during his process, after he acquired the property for permitting. At that time, the board might remember that it was known as like a sicko gas station with auto repair as part of it, and when Mr. McNeil acquired it, he removed the canopy and the gas pumps and focused more on the auto repair component. In part of that process, he sought permission from the Board of Appeals through a special permit procedure to be able to sell used cars on the lot. And that permit was, or that license, I should say, or permit really, from the Board of Appeals and subsequent license from this board, was not designed to be a primary part of the business, it was really secondary and complimentary to the auto repair. He wanted the ability that if he, if he fixed a car or came upon a car, that he could put it on the lot and sell it through his Class II license, and that's required. And a lot of times, customers would want, you know, to buy a car, he would come across it, he would market it, so it was really not a primary aspect of the business. If you've, if you've watched that business for the past four years, you've probably noticed that nothing was ever marketed upon the lot for sale. So at this point, Michael, through Elite Auto Service, is acquiring the property, and he would like to continue that practice. As I've mentioned, the property was issued a special permit to allow the sale of used vehicles on the lot. That happened in 2013. There were a number of conditions that were put on by the Board of Appeals at that time. I think of primary interest to this board is a condition that the Board of Appeals limited the number of cars at any one time for sale to two. So, you know, to say this isn't going to become a, you know, used car lot, we recognize that you're going to do repairs, but we'll allow you to sell cars, but only two at a time. And Michael is happy to abide by that condition, in fact, he has to. We've gone back to the Board of Appeals recently, approximately two weeks ago, we informed them that the property was being sold, and they consented in, to the transfer of the special permit. So that has been accomplished at the zoning Board of Appeals. Michael and I have gone through all the conditions, there's approximately 10 conditions that the Board of Appeals has pursuant to this special permit, we've reviewed them in detail, and he recognizes his requirement to comply with those conditions, some of which include landscaping components to the property around the sign and maintenance of planters on the property. There's a decorative fence on North Ave. that the Board of Appeals required to be installed, which has been installed. There's also a limit on vehicles parked on the property at night, to maximum of 10, and then there's two drop-off spaces. So again, Michael is very familiar with those. So what we're looking for is to have the issuance of a Class II license, there's really no way to transfer Class II license. Again, the zoning board has already approved it, and we're requesting your board to allow business as usual at the site, if you will, as part of the conditions on the transfer or the sale, which is going to take place this week. I should also add that under Mass General Lodge, anyone with a Class II is required to have a bond in the amount of $25,000. Elite has complied with that requirement, we do have the bond in our possession. If we're fortunate enough to get the license granted tonight, then I will deliver the bond to the town administrator tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Mr. Faubert.
So I remember this coming with the Board of Appeals. So basically, what you're saying is he's acquiring the property and wants to acquire the same rights that the current owner has.
Correct.
Is that basically it? You're not looking to enlarge the prior license or anything like that?
No.
Okay. And refresh me again, what was the, only mildly, and it doesn't really matter, what was the, was the issue with the ZBA way back when, when this first got permitted?
One of the conditions is signage, and that was really the biggest issue with the Board of Appeals.
That's what it was, yeah.
So.
It wasn't a setup, by the way.
Yeah, in the Board of Appeals, I'm sorry.
She said that wasn't a setup, I actually forgot, yeah.
So there is, one of the conditions is that the board retained jurisdiction on signage.
Right.
And so we've already, actually have commenced discussions with the Board of Appeals on modification of signage on the site, they've already approved a rendition of signage that will change on the site, we would be for them approximately two weeks ago on that.
And the, the condition still remains, just to confirm, two cars, max two cars?
That condition is still in place with the Board of Appeals, correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
It's rare that that would ever be enforced, but glad it's there.
It's such a beautiful piece, area of Wakefield, there was a Vets Field right there, and the Thames Courts and the lake, and I do remember when this came up before us, and it was the issue with the ZBA, but I'm glad to hear that landscaping and decorative fencing, because you do, I'm sure you're going to run a great business, and we want it to look nice as we drive by, the place across from Dunkin' Donuts on North Avenue, Main Street, that wasn't very good-looking. Now, it's, it looks very nice, it's immaculate, driving by it, so, you know, I'm sure you know that that area is a beautiful area, so that to have all these bells and whistles does mean a lot for people in the town, and the two cars, so I'm glad those, those are in place.
Well, the good part is, you know, Michael's going to own the property, so he's going to become, he's going to operate his business in Wakefield, he's excited to come to Wakefield. He currently is in Somerville, moving his business to Wakefield, so he will own the real estate, so he's going to be vested as a business member of the community, he looks forward to keeping the site in good shape.
Mr. D.
There's two questions for you. First, I know that one of the requirements of the Class II license is fingerprinting. Have you done that yet at the police station?
I have not, Nick.
Okay, so Mr. McGrath, that's something he would presumably do beforehand, then?
We would.
Okay. And the other question relates to, you know, picking up on this idea, as I'm sure you're probably aware, we're investing a lot of time and energy into trying to come up with a strategic plan, a cohesive vision for the downtown, but it's not just the downtown, it's the surrounding, you know, areas, well, so we have some continuity throughout the town. I know you mentioned Attorney McGrath, some of the landscaping, could you maybe go into detail in terms of what your client would be willing to commit to, you know, here to the board in terms of his, in terms of landscaping elements and his interest in helping to maintain and beautify that property, you know, in a way that maybe it doesn't present currently?
Sure. When this went before, the Board of Appeals also went through a site plan approval process, which they do when they issue special permits. So they looked at this property in detail as far as how it could function properly, that's why they limited the number of cars that are allowed on the property at night, because they didn't want just cars parked everywhere in a, in a haphazard manner. And they also looked at it from an aesthetic standpoint, recognizing the location of it and across from the lake, and for lack of a better term, a sensitive location. So, you know, at that time, they said, you know, to my client at that time, you know, we want to, you know, improve the property compared to what it is. It was really being improved because the canopy was coming down, it was always lit up at night, and also the, the gas pumps were being taken, taken out. But in addition, in addition, they wanted to look for opportunities for landscaping. And what, what they came up with and required was, is a, there's a freestanding sign that is on the corner of the property, at the intersection of North Ave. and Church that faces North Ave. as you go by, and what they required was to have that, a landscaped island put in, before it was just a sign in hot top, there was no landscaping at all. So they required a landscaped planter to be put in around the sign, which has been put in, unfortunately, over time, if you look at it, I drove by it today, you know, it's in okay shape, but it can be better as far as what's maintained there. So part one is, to answer your question, is that Mike is committed to making that island, always keeping it in meticulous shape, except for the wintertime, to make sure it's watered, to make sure that any dead plants are removed, it's trimmed, weeded, and taken care of, and I think that that will be an improvement. The second thing that the Board of Appeals require was to have seasonal planters on the Church Street side, and at the time, they looked at the possibility, and they had our engineer look at the possibility of not having planters, but actually landscaping there, taking up the hot top. And the property has cross easements with the property next door, so if you face the property from Church Street, the property to the left on Church Street, so it's a gray house that is right kind of in my field, in Vets Field, that property has cross easements with this, so they have. with this, so they have to use each other's driveways. So there was some limitation on what could be done to keep access there and make it available. So there are some limitations on the property. So what the Board of Appeals came up with was a requirement to have seasonal planters, three of them, on that strip. And so there's been compliance with that, that requirement from a technical term, a technical perspective, I should say. What, Mike is not happy with those planters that are there today. He would like to do something more elaborate and more in conformity with what might be happening in the downtown area. There's planters downtown, there were some there this summer. I think those might change next year. So what he would like to do is work with that program and the consultant to figure out what's going to happen downtown and kind of coordinate that the planters that he would put would work in harmony with the planters that would go downtown.
So as we have actually commuted tonight, Mr. Fetterman, Fetterman Design, then your client is willing to work with Fetterman Design in coordinating efforts to be sure that there's more cohesion in the aesthetic?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't like the ones that are there now. They're terrible.
It could be a lot better, and I think we all agree with that. So, and his goal is to make it better and to make it more of a gateway compared to the way it is now.
And even with the planters, I mean, there are any number of options, and I'm not a landscape designer, but there are certain trees and even evergreens and things that maintain a certain size, but not overly large, but you can have them year-round and things of that nature. So I would just ask that, you know, you'd be open to that, because that's, to Ann's point, that's such an important gateway, especially if you're coming off of, you know, 128. And that, it's a pretty area, and you see the lake, you see people playing ball, and then you see this, you know, less than desirable, you know, corner location that I think has limitations, but potential. That needs, that I think needs to be realized. Thank you.
Yes.
Any further discussion from members of the board?
One question, just out of curiosity. Why move your business? You live in Somerville.
I live in Woolworth.
Oh, do you? Oh, you're... Your address says Somerville in here.
That's the current business address. That's Elite's address, which is the Apple.
That answers half of my question. So why move from Somerville to here? Actually, that probably answers the whole thing. Is there more to it?
Well, we've been renting, rather own than rent. It's a small space, one lift, you know, sharing space with someone else, just an opportunity to grow, really, is what it is.
Mike's business focus is on Mercedes. That's his...
Yeah, I've been looking at his website.
Yeah. So, you know, that's what he does. He does Mercedes, does repairs. And he has a clientele, so hopefully he'll bring some business to downtown, people coming from out of town for their service on their vehicles.
Drop their vehicles off and eat.
Exactly. Walk downtown.
All set? I'll entertain a motion then to approve, vote to issue a license to Elite Auto Services in a Class II license.
Is it issuing or is it transferring?
He said vote to issue.
Issue issue.
So moved.
Second motion. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Apologize, Mr. Chairman, for coming in late. I canceled my early train.
That's what happens when you lose. Good work. Okay, can we move on, please, to the next item on our list? It would be a request from the Traffic Advisory Committee. I'm going to turn the show over to our town administrator, so he can go through the numerous requests.
Okay, I think we have four requests, all from citizens, actually, that went to the Traffic Advisory Committee. And what happens is that oftentimes, citizens have an issue in their neighborhood, they want to stop sign, there's parking issues, there's speeding issues or what have you. And what we do is we have a Traffic Advisory Committee that is chaired by Lieutenant Scory, and we meet along with the town engineer, DPW Director, Town Planner, our traffic engineer from VHB, and VHB will be here tonight on another matter. And we listen to the citizens, go through it, see what makes sense, and then we actually go out and view the issues and then come back to this board if needed. And the reason why a lot of them come to this board is because they are in part and parcel regulatory. So if it's a stop sign, we certainly, we cannot enforce a stop sign if the Board of Selectmen don't approve that. So that's why they're all here. So these have all been vetted by VHB, have been vetted by Lieutenant Scory, DPW Director, Town Engineer, and what have you, and citizens actually came and testified at each one of them. It's posted, so everyone knows in the neighborhood whether there's going to be a stop sign in the neighborhood or what have you. And oftentimes, members of this board weigh in and refer items to me. So if you want, Mr. Chairman, I'll go through all four, and I think you could handle these all with one vote, although we'll do them separately if you'd like that. The first one is a request for a stop sign on Gumwood Lane at the intersection with Andrews Road. This is a T-type intersection, and we are recommending, or the TAC, that a stop sign be installed on Gumwood Lane at the intersection of Andrews. There's been some concern with people blowing through that and causing problems. I think it was Mr. Falvey they might have been talking about.
This is going to make money longer for me to get home.
It is, yes.
Four seconds.
I oppose.
Okay.
Do we want to do a separate vote, or are we...
The second one is a request from a citizen for remedy of northbound traffic on Main Street from blocking Pearl Street. Now, Pearl Street intersects with Main, right where Salem and Church Street intersect, and if that backs up and people block that intersection, people cannot take a left and go up there onto Pearl Street, and it backs all the way back and what have you. So we use the same type of theory on North Ave. as well, and if it's not blocked, it does make sense. So this does help that, and it also gives us a way to make sure that happens. 997 Main Street, some condos in Greenwood, it's a driveway, and when people park right up to that driveway on either side, people have, patrons, or people that live in that condo have problems coming in and out of that complex. This would move that down 10 feet on each side and would make sure that people can come out with clear sightlines and actually go along their way. The last one is at 219 Albion Street, and there are a couple of businesses there. And again, when people park right to the corner of the driveway there, it impedes people coming in and out from behind there. So we're asking for a crosswalk, excuse me, we're recommending that the parking be restricted 10 feet to the east and 10 feet to the west of both driveways. Again, that 10 feet of sight distance allows people to get in and out there safely. They've all been reported by John Kennedy, and I've got to say, for the record, John Kennedy, who was our traffic engineer for many, many years with VHB, is actually retiring, so to speak. So we will certainly miss him, but we're very comfortable with the company and the other people that we have there. So those are the four requests that I have, Mr. Chairman, and I would be happy to take them with one vote if you so desire.
Any questions from the board first?
One question, because I was involved with one of these issues. How long will this take to get implemented, these signs?
Once we get these, pretty quickly.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have them dig safety up very quickly.
Thank you.
We do parcel a bunch of them before we go to Traffic Advisory, so it does take a little while.
Any other questions, concerns?
Mr. Mayor, I know that you said that they're, the public had been made aware. Has there been any negative feedback about any of these proposed changes?
No, we have a, they were, you know, was posted, people came to the meeting, and again, most of these are citizens that are coming. And that's, other than Mr. Falvey, we've had no negative comments on any of them.
Yet.
Yet, yet. There will be.
And then if, for some reason, you know, one of these changes turns out to not actually work out?
If we find it to be a horrible item, we would be back to this board, and we could certainly change regulatory, absolutely. That's why we go through a very long vetting process. We haven't had too many of those happen over the years.
And the questions from the board. I'll entertain a motion then that we vote the slate of the recommendations being presented us to the TAC.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I'm in.
He's in. Plastic bag bylaw. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, we do have a few members, I believe, of our plastic bag committee here. Maybe I could invite them up, Mr. Chairman. I think Caitlin Bracken is here. And Mr. Bracken, you can come up too. You're okay there? Good. She doesn't need you anywhere. I don't see anybody else from the committee, but I would like to thank the committee, which was Caitlin Bracken, Rada, who represented the merchants, Laurie Hunt, who represented the chamber, Tasha Festal, who represented, I guess, the citizen at large, and also the board liaisons were Marine Butt and Peter May. The board may remember that at the May Town Meeting, there was a bylaw, an amendment or a plastic bag bylaw in front of the voters, and that came very close to passing. There were a number of questions from the community, and the community actually voted to turn it back to the selectmen, to form a committee to study it, which they did, and with the, I think with the real expectation that we be back in the fall with an updated or an amended bylaw. I've got to say, these meetings were really well-attended, even with people from the public who came to them. There was much discussion. But I think at the end of the day, we all came down to the fact that the real focus was to reduce the use of single bags. I think that was really the intent of the bylaw, and we kind of went through a couple of things to figure out why, how we could answer some of the questions at Town Meeting, one of which was the milling or the width of the bag. And the actual Town Meeting amendment that had gone through before, or article before, was 2.5 mils. We reduced that to 2.25 mils. And there's actually some science behind that, that that is the level where you would get 125 uses, 125 uses at 20 pounds of a bag. And that is an area where the economic cost of the bag and the environmental impact seem to intersect. Does that sound right, Caitlin?
Yes.
Caitlin did a lot of work on that, some stealing with thunder. And that's what actually the state of California has adopted. There's also a lot of questions about the size of the businesses, how this would be affected, although many people felt that it should apply to all businesses, regardless of their size. So we decided to take a tiered-in approach to allow smaller businesses to phase out any bags that they may have purchased. So we decided to present that if a business that was less than 2,500 square feet, they would be implemented on September 1st here, 2018. All other businesses, July 1st, 2018. We also decided that if anybody came in and had a hardship, that there could be an extension of up to three months granted through the town administrator's office. Really wanted to make it easy for everyone to comply. We also talked a lot that there should be a penalty and that it should mean something. I think we had that same discussion regarding a recent dog bite case. Someone came in front of the board to talk about that, that there were no penalties, were kind of meaningless. So in keeping with that idea, the first violation is certainly a warning for the first offense, and then a fine of 100 for the second offense, 200 for the third, and 300 for the fourth. We also talked a lot about what will happen if this passes Town Meeting. If it does pass Town Meeting, we have until July 1st of 2018 to do a real marketing, educational campaign to the businesses. We also feel that there are many grants out there and availability to get reusable bags. Maybe the chamber gets involved, Main Streets, local merchants, what have you, shop Wakefield, and we can hand those out and what have you. So I think it was a great committee. I think it's a good bylaw. I think we are certainly moving in the right direction, and I don't know if Caitlin has anything to say, and then maybe the two liaisons that will be here. Mr. Chairman, do you want anything to add, Caitlin? No? I talked enough?
Not this time. Okay. My two liaisons, anybody have any comments?
You did a great summary. It was a really great group. I think we had six committee members and then six, at least six at each meeting, members of the community who came and were invested in this, which is great. Something Caitlin pointed out last Town Meeting, and the number's probably gone up since then, is 55 other communities have done this, and then it's grown up. Well, I know Bedford passed it, so it has gone up at least by one in Massachusetts. So no, it's a great bylaw. People were supportive. Thank you for all your work on it.
And I also think at the end of the day, members of the business community and the chamber, they are all, everyone was in favor of this that sat there.
Yes.
No, I think it'll be interesting to see what happens. The last Town Meeting was very close, and I think it seems very fair. I think that initially, I wanted to see, I think, it be all or nothing. You know, everyone had to live under the same rules, and whether it was the larger chaws or the little mom and pop. But I think this is fair, and again, it's really up to the Town Meeting to decide. But very interesting, great job. A lot of hoots better get in here and do it in front of the Town Meeting as well. Hopefully, you got an A on your paper.
I am. Just interesting, I was in Europe, actually Iceland, over the summer. If you go to the grocery store and you want a bag, they charge you. I'm sure you're aware of these examples, but they, if you want to use just a regular one, we consider a free plastic bag, it costs you more than if you didn't. They're just trying to deter use, and so everybody has their own bags, and you just, you know, it's one of those changes that you just adapt to in life, and all good.
Same thing. I was in Toronto this weekend at a major supermarket, and they asked if I needed bags, which I did because I was staying in a hotel, but how many? And then gave me three, and then I had to bag my own. So absolutely a deterrent.
And everybody looked down at you like...
Pop away. I know. With my smelly coffee on my head. But I, it absolutely was going towards that, which was impressive that other countries are getting on board, so, and well done on this. Great job.
I mean, don't even do that again. Sorry.
Keep it up, Paul.
Yeah.
First of all, great work. Really appreciate the effort that you put through with this. It certainly is a testament to the educational system we have here in Wakefield. Couple of questions, though. That 2,500 square feet, does that include, is that selling space only, or does that include warehouse space as well?
That was selling space, I do believe. Finished space, finished space of 2,500 square feet or less.
Okay, so what if stores that had warehouse space that equal 2,500 square feet would affect?
Really, when we looked at the, because we looked at each business, we had actual spreadsheet done by square footage, really, 2,500 square feet is, you're really getting all of your big boys in there first, and then you're, then almost, there's almost a huge draft. There's a lot of 500, 600, 700. That would get three extra months.
Okay. And the other question is, would this affect restaurants at all with takeout bags? Because I'm just retail-only.
Just retail. Just retail.
It purposely excludes like dry cleaner bags and restaurants and bread shops.
Also excludes any, the farmer's market, it also includes like if there's fairs and things like that, because then on a retail establishment.
And excludes all agricultural, correct?
Well, if you're going to get that for your produce and stuff, that is excluded. Yes.
Couple of questions. What sort of analysis was conducted of the communities that have adopted this, and what results were found?
I would, just that they've just adopted them recently. We really looked at how they notified people. We were very concerned with how they did on that, but whether, what they found out, I think that we, to answer your question, we really didn't look, probably did down the future with it, what's happened, but I haven't heard any issues either.
Just one of my questions is, you know, what is the economic impact on businesses of doing this? And I think that it's an important consideration in a business-friendly town, that we be mindful of that at least. And then the other question is, what are the estimates of the reduction in plastic bag use if this bylaw were to be approved?
Well, it would be basically 100% of all those bags, because no one would have it anymore.
Right.
Impounded or stuff like that.
Yeah. How do you quantify what the...
I don't know how we would, because we don't know where customers go. It's a good question. We'll have to check our recycling and what have, and see what happens, if, or in our trash, see what happens.
I just remember some of the stats that Caitlin did in the previous thing. So like when certain states in Cali, certain cities in California did that, they noticed no change. Countries, you know, if I mentioned Iceland, Ireland is completely bag-free. There's been no economic impact. I think it's, I think what basically it says is, you know, people adjust, and so it's just, that's what they do. So really, there hasn't been any negative economic impact. I think that there's been some positive economic impact, because I think as we've heard at the previous thing, people throw these bags away, and then there's cost to clean up, there's cost in the recycling to clean up the gumming thing. So it's actually, I think it's a cost that's spread across everybody. So I think the net impact has been positive, net economic impact. everybody. So I think the net impact has been positive, net economic impact.
I mean, I think it's ultimately a decision for the town to be making. I just, I would be interested to know what we're gonna realize in terms of the actual savings. Like, how many bags are we saving? How many pounds of bags are we saving? Because, you know, I think that that should be part of the information campaign that goes out there, so people know, you know, they're educated in terms of what their vote actually would represent.
I mean, I think we can certainly, you know, go to shaws, go to CVS, find, you know, how many bags they typically generate a month, or something of that nature.
I think we can check and see how the communities, if there's a, you know, if they said, well, we had our trash, we saw our marked, like a ton a month, or whatever it was, when that came in.
I mean, just like any, like any other initiative where you're trying to, you know, have a results-oriented approach, you know what the result is expected to be. And I just feel like, absent that, it seems more like theoretical than it does practical. And I'd like to just have a better understanding of that. And I think the townspeople would probably have a better understanding of that, too.
Okay.
Don't you have another question? More of a statement, if this does pass a town meeting, I would just like the retailers affected be notified right away.
Right.
And then, I don't want them buying a two-year supply of plastic bags, and then, so we just lessen the impact on the affected retailers.
Wasn't one of the purposes of having the committee, we had a member of the business on there, we had, so Rada was on there, Laurie was representing.
The chamber.
The chamber. So I, my assumption is, and you said they were all on board, that they already know. They probably, Laurie, I'm sure, has chatted up the businesses, and Rada as well, that they probably know this is coming down the pike. So I don't think it will be like last time, when the vote went out, and it was a bit of a surprise to folks. I think this is gonna be much more of an ease in. And as for results, this is something that I'm not necessarily thinking we might make money on it, but environmentally, it's kind of a no-brainer, to change attitude a little bit, and to get the plastic bags out.
And that's why we moved the date out to July 1.
Yeah, absolutely.
So there's plenty of time to do that analysis. And I think the merchants wanted to make sure that it wasn't like implemented right away, where maybe they had bought holiday bags and what have you now. All those things were discussed.
Jim?
Yes?
Just one question. More of a statement, I guess, if I remember right, these bags that you're targeting, they're not even recyclable, right? They're not, they just actually cause green.
They jam the machines.
Exactly. So there's nothing but positive things by, I mean, you can't do anything with them, it's just.
Right.
Okay.
And is this committee suggesting the best alternative? Is it paper bags with handles? Is it the higher pliable plastic bags? I mean, so the business has had some direction going forward in terms of, you know, what other communities have done, and have found are good replacements? I mean, obviously just reusing bags, I understand that, but not everyone's gonna bring in the reusable bags into their shops. So have you, has the committee given any thought to that, or would it?
What we talked about with the committee, and particularly the chamber and people like that, was actually putting out and using it as a marketing opportunity for the shop local with reusable bags. I think we're, I think I'll take some of these prop outs, kinda like these, that they can, you know, people can use them. So that's, that was part and parcel of our talking about it, too.
Any other comments on the board? Then I'll leave a motion then to send the plastic bag bylaw as recommended by the committee to the board.
So moved.
Seconded.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Caitlin, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job. Good job. What's next on your list, Caitlin? What's next on your target list?
Nope. Nope. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the streetscape improvements. Welcome to Wakefield.
Thank you. I went to high school in Wakefield. It's a great town. Coming home. Yep, exactly. Do I move?
And just for the public, could you introduce yourself?
Yes, I just wanna make sure my equipment's working. My name is Trish Domigan. I work with the design firm of VHB. I'm the Director of Municipal Services for Massachusetts. I'm here tonight with, I think you know, everyone here knows Mark Faverman, of Faverman Design Group. We're going to talk a little bit about Main Street and answer any questions that you may have. This is a great opportunity for the town. You have a beautiful town. You really do have a very nice downtown area. But this is an opportunity to actually take a look at what the needs of the downtown is, what exactly you're missing in terms of destinations, and making sure that it's a little bit more walkable than what you have right now. We spoke last week a little bit about what the vision for the town will be, and what the project limits that we'll be taking a look at. So just to let you know, we'll be taking a look at the transportation component of the downtown area, but not necessarily the vehicular transportation. It's more of a multimodal, complete streets approach. You're in the process, before you just adopted a complete streets policy, congratulations, that's terrific. And this will just go towards your policy itself, and making Wakefield more multimodal. The project limits will be going from the lake itself down to the junction, and we'll just be taking a look at, like I said, traffic evaluation of that whole area, and taking a look at what the needs are of the corridor itself in a phased approach. It's a pretty long strip of Main Street, and we just wanna make sure that it's implementable for the When we talked about this project, what we were talking about was a vision that the Board of Selectmen have, and the community, what have a vibrant downtown. You know, there's a lot of energy, there's a lot of the demographics in the towns changing a little bit. People wanna walk a little bit more than they used to in the past, ride their bicycles. You have a great opportunity with the rail trail coming into the town, where you can have people on the rail trail coming to the downtown area, park their bikes, and then, you know, go to the restaurants, ice cream shops, things like that. It's just really great. Or go to CVS if they need Advil after riding their bikes for 20 miles. We'll be taking a look at the pedestrian and the bicycle connectivity. So going from the lake to the downtown, make sure that there's safe routes, but not necessarily safe routes, but also aesthetic routes, you know, desire lines that people actually wanna go in. Right now, if you look at Main Street, you know, there's really wide sidewalk areas, which is terrific, but everything's almost like a vehicular scale. It's big. So bring it down to a little bit more of an intimate feel to the downtown area, so that people are drawn in, and making it more of a destination instead of just a pass-through. One of the past studies identified the downtown area and Main Street as a cultural identity, something so that you can have outside venues, or outside places where you can appreciate the arts, and work hand-in-hand with artists, so that the people wanna see what Wakefield has to offer, all the amenities, not only just, you know, your structures and your infrastructure, but also the people who live here, and really create the community as it is right now. Open spaces really ties into that, so that people actually have places to go. Also, we wanna improve the aesthetics. Some of the downtown area is a little bit worn. We wanna just take a look at it, see what improvements need to happen, so that it, again, draws people to the downtown area, makes it more of a destination. And also, cost-effective, you know, we wanna have, we wanna make sure that things are sustainable. You know, we're not gonna be suggesting something that might be, you know, in favor right now, and then three years from now, you're gonna be repairing it, or taking a look at another option, because this one just doesn't work for the downtown area. I'm not gonna go through all this. This is a lot of words on a slide. I hate a lot of words on a slide. But just to, there's been numerous studies of the downtown area. You guys have invested a lot of time and a lot of money up to this point, to say what the deficiencies and need, how you can improve the center of town. What we'll do is, we'll take a look at all of those reports. And there's, I already have taken a look at some of the reports. There's a constant theme, you know, pedestrian accessible, pedestrian destination, don't touch the parking. I get that. But make it so it's easier to cross over Main Street. You know, it's a pretty wide area right now. It's a pretty wide roadway. For people to get from one side of the street to another, you wanna make sure that those crossings are a little bit shorter. Take a look at the traffic signal, see what the most up-to-date types of equipment is. And when you are trying to cross the road, make sure that everything's in good repair. You also have been initiating, I had mentioned the bike path, but also the Albion Street project that, we helped you out, we prepared a concept plan, and you've been moving that forward with Mr. Faverman, so that you can actually make a cultural corridor along Albion Street. And that's awesome. That's good for you. That's just terrific. Taking all of those reports, what I've noticed is that you have almost like goals and objectives. You have a message that you wanna, that you wanna achieve with your downtown area. You want a distinct identity, being cultural and art-driven. You wanna have wayfinding signage, so that people know where they are, where the lake is, where to get to certain destinations, on foot, not necessarily in a car, through the Main Street corridor itself. Open space, it was, it was great. I was out here walking it, just to get the feel of the corridor last week, and it was such a beautiful day, and there were so many people out enjoying Main Street itself. But there's so many opportunities to just make it better. There were people in the park and the common area, but to get to the common area, it's almost like playing chicken. So it's just things like that, that we'll be taking a look at, to see what improvements are needed to make it safer for the community, but also more beautiful for the community also. The links to the corridor destination's interesting, because we wanna make sure that people have a place to go from where they're going from. So, you know, just make sure that the destinations are clear, that the desire lines have been identified. There's a lot of different roadways, there's a lot of different sidewalks, bike routes in the region. We just wanna make sure that it's clear, and people, when they, when they're going on a roadway, they know that they can continue to go on the route that they typically go. The desire line is still there, and make it more inviting for people to stay within those desire lines. And also, Mr. Faverman's going to help out with the streetscape, and make it more of a theme, so that there is continuity within the community itself. Am I, like, talking too much here? Let me know when you wanna jump in.
You're doing fine, Joe.
One of the first steps that we wanna do is just take a look at the traffic circulation. Right now, it's very vehicular-focused. It's vehicular-centric, I like to say. And what we wanna do is just break that up a little bit, so that, you know, we don't wanna reduce the level of service of the vehicles that are passing through each of the intersections, but we wanna rebalance it a little bit. So maybe there's not so much pavement, maybe the sidewalks are a little bit wider, or maybe there's a designated bike, you know, lane, or cycle track, or off-road path for, a shared-use path for bikes themselves. So we'll take a look at that as we progress through the traffic evaluation. We wanna promote transit use. That's one of the things that the studies also said, that, so the bus stops have to be clearly marked. Any of the destinations, like the Galvin School, you know, just make sure that people are aware where the bus stops are, and where they will be going to. Universal access, we wanna make sure that everything's ADA compliant. It's interesting that a lot of communities don't keep up with their ADA compliance, you know, update their wheelchair ramps or their crosswalks. So crosswalks actually go into curbing, which is just not, it's not accessible. It's a burden for disadvantaged folks. We wanna evaluate the parking usage. So we don't wanna touch the parking. I know parking is very special in downtown Main Street. When I was down there last week, it was really full. There were certain sections, though, that weren't as full as others, and maybe we can rebalance that, too. You know, that's something that, if you wanna shift the traffic over to one side a little bit more, so that you have more opportunities for pedestrians and bicyclists, that's something that we'll be taking a look at. And like I said, I keep on saying, the theme is connectivity through the corridor itself. That's very important. One of the things that we will be taking a look at are sidewalk bumpouts. We, as we developed the Albion Street concept plan, we put together some bumpouts adjacent to traffic, parking areas on the Main Street corridor. And it seemed like it was very well-received. You know, there's opportunities for more plantings, break up the pavement along the corridor itself. You have beautiful plantings out there. You do a lovely job of maintaining them. Maybe seek out more opportunities to do things like that. And also, it's practical, it's a safety issue. We will reduce the width of the crosswalks that are crossing over Main Street by adding in bumpouts. Is that one of your?
Well, I just, I just wanna say that to make Wakefield unique, this is, there are a lot of opportunities here, as we talked about the last time I spoke. So there are a lot of tools that we have, and a lot of opportunities that are here. And I think, once the traffic patterns are engineered and thought about in a very logical way, that will enhance the connectivity between the lake, and the common, and downtown as well. And I think, I would add one more piece to the multimodal thing that Patricia was saying. You have the commuter rail. And the commuter rail is generally gone to by pedestrians, right? So there's a real connection between the rail and walkers. So that's a whole nother consideration, I think, that will be down the road. But I like the idea that we can have a real connectivity going on. And also, whatever we do downtown, that could be done out in other parts of the town later on. And this could be also looked at in a phased way, so that things can be done as finances and resources are found.
You good?
I'm good.
Good. There's also, what we're also going to look at are opportunities along the corridor itself. One of the items that was discussed last week was food trucks, and, you know, an opportunity to actually have places where, you know, just some place where people would be gathering, where there would be opportunities to park, you know, certain businesses like food trucks, so that people can enjoy them. And also, artist areas.
So of course, we're gonna go through a process to develop community branding. And then with that community branding, then we will apply it to street furniture, and to wayfinding, and to public art, perhaps, and also eventually social media as well. So not only streetscape elements, but also social media elements.
As I had mentioned back in 2013, the Albion Street concept was developed, and you have been working on that since then. One of the reports focused on this area. And one of the first steps that we would be taking a look at is Albion Street, see where the locations of the parking is with the bumpouts. We took an opportunity for the roadway itself, and tried to narrow it down slightly, so that the crossings would be a little bit clearer. The traffic memo from my office, VHB, from Mr. Kennedy, had mentioned site distance at a driveway, and that's very important, especially with the narrow roadway like Albion Street. And we'd be taking a look at maybe the bumpouts at driveways that are used often, to improve the site distance coming in and out of the driveway, and to get the pedestrians out of the way from people entering and exiting the driveways themselves. I apologize for the scale of this plan, but you can see the bumpouts and the brick, the brick crosswalks at Albion Street on Main Street, and that's something that we're gonna be bringing forward. So I just wanted to get real quick on a timeline that we were thinking about. So the transportation evaluation, you know, taking a look at who's using the corridor itself, the traffic, but the pedestrians and the cyclists also, through the fall and winter, coming up with recommendations in the winter. So when I'm talking winter 2018, I mean like February or March, something like that. And in that process, we'll be meeting with the advisory committee, the branding advisory committee, you know, just to make sure that there's transparency in the process, make sure that we get comments from the community on the development of any of the plans that are moving forward. We're anticipating that we would be developing construction drawings for advertisement for fiscal, it's 19, right? So July of next year, which is fiscal 19, so that you could start moving ahead with some of the studies that have been done in the past, and putting them into the ground.
And this would probably be in a phased way.
Right.
Comments on the board? I think Mr. Long will have the first.
I really like the aggressive timetable. The sooner the better, so I'm very, much supportive of that. The bumpouts, the public space, and the pocket parks, would they come at the expense of parking spots downstairs, or out down?
I know what you meant. We have to take a look at where the parking is and where there's opportunities. So you may be able to shift parking slightly, and then introduce a pocket park or a new bumpout. But our objective is not to affect the parking.
Okay. A lot of communities are now testing the waters, so to speak.
Right.
And they're doing pop-up retail areas, and they're doing pocket parks that are temp- And they're doing pop-up retail areas, and they're doing pocket parks that are temporary for, like, a few days. So I think that that's what we're sort of talking about initially, so that we can test the waters and see if it really fits. And if it does fit, then we have to go back to the drawing board and really do something. But it could be a very active, vital experience for the community to have something quite new and sort of appears and then disappears.
Right. And that way, the community can give feedback back to see what they like, what they didn't like, if it was a burden on them with parking, things like that.
Just a kind of procedural question. Who do you work for in the town? Us or Mr. Reavis or...
I guess we all work for you. At the end of the day.
Who are they?
We did. We will be. VHB has been under contract with us.
No problem here, I'm just curious.
Traffic advisory and the board at a recent meeting did hire Mr. Faverman.
Yeah, okay. All right. And did you work with Paul Reavis? Is that your primary POC for this, or is it you, Steve?
Probably both of us together.
All right, just curious. All right, so my real question, a couple of them, I guess I'll start with parking. So you talked about parking usage, when it's in the parking issues. Any previews of things that work downtown? And I'll give you one of the problems I think that needs to be solved is the people who park there for the day, you know, for whatever reason. And we have business owners who park in front of their own business for the entire day. And then we have people who, you know, work in offices and places downtown, and they'll just park in front of the business for the entire day without any regard for, you know, the 30-minute or one-hour parking limitation. As a town, we choose literally not to enforce any of that. So should we? Are meters a good way? You know, five cents an hour, whatever it is, is just a good way to keep a tab on it? Is it, you know, warnings from police officers or tickets? Or what's the way to make people understand that that's really the problem? You know, if there weren't 40 accountants and lawyers down there whose cars took all those spots, you could actually find a spot when you drive around during the day, so...
In different communities, what we've done is seen what the parking turnover is so that you can see whether or not if someone is working at a business, they're parking right in front of the business.
Just accept it as true, that that's what happens.
Okay. Or the commuters, right? Commuters come into town, they park someplace, they keep their car for eight to 10 hours and then they go off.
I've sat down there with people who own businesses and we've counted the cars and watched the non-turnover, and it's like, oh, so-and-so parks his car right there all day, every day, clockwork. Make sure he gets there before everybody else and gets his spot, and make sure no patrons can get to that business. So, I mean, that kind of, everybody knows. So what's the right way without some sort of uproar? And I don't even care if there's an uproar, but if there's a way to do it without one...
I think we have to take a look at how the usage is, because there are areas on Main Street where there was no, you know, no one was parking in the parking spaces. So, you know, you have to kind of balance, would people be willing to walk a little bit further and be able to park...
Avoid a $50 ticket?
Well, enforcement's important.
Right, I mean, that's what I'm asking. What's the thing that makes them no longer want to park there? Does just the honor system of a meter, just, you know, that my meter expired, that scares us all?
Well, if you have a meter that expires, you have to have someone that actually takes a look to see if the meter has expired. So it all goes back to enforcement, right?
In some communities, you would have a sign that says two hours or one hour, and not necessarily a meter, and that would also...
Again, enforcement is the only way.
Enforcement's key. Also, this is a very old phrase, I don't even know where it comes from, but the phrase "moral sway" is something I would suggest to the merchants and to the businesses there, that they do not park where there's turnover.
That's something, you're spot on, that I think our chamber, you know, and others need to, leaders need to put out, because I find it's, you know, oftentimes, it's the business owners themselves are parking in front of their own stores. I have one tell me, you know, the parking down here is, you know, awful, and I was thinking, oh, I know it is, let's talk about this. And she said, you know, my employees can't park near the store, they have to walk, you know, when they come to work, they end up having to walk. I was like, why are you telling your employees it's okay to park near the store? You know, like, there's a mess there, there's a degree of education that needs to go up, so, but, okay. I was really curious about that one.
Thank you.
Just a couple points. With the safety links being critical, I think that's really true. The, when you're connecting, say, say, I'm trying to think of the Upper Commons, Lower Commons, just, like you say, you take your life in your own hands by just trying to get across the street. You know, I was almost killed going across to Sabatino's from the library, you know, and I was in a crosswalk, but people, one car stopped and then someone passed on the right, which is on the, near the sidewalk, which is crazy. So the connectivity and making it, I think you had mentioned, it's just so dangerous at times, just to get to and from, you know, Upper or Lower Commons, or there's some restaurant or whatever.
Well, there's no defined location to, or some of the desire lines are not the same as crosswalks. So you just have to make it clear where a pedestrian does have to cross the street.
Okay. Are there any other ways, though, that you have just seen other places that you've developed and, or other towns you've seen where they have any kind of different kind of connectivity where it's not just a crosswalk or not just a bumpout? But I just wanted to see if there's any other ways that you've seen that, you've seen the downtown a number of times, obviously, so are there ways to, any other things that we can look forward to, I guess?
Go ahead.
I have seen in Boston a lot, and Brookline also has this, Cambridge, where the crosswalk has a big sign that you stop for a pedestrian's crossing.
Right.
And in some cases, it's a big fine if you don't.
Right, the blinking lights that...
They're wrapped in rectangular flashing beams.
They don't have those as much as just the signs.
Should that get your attention? That's something I've seen in downtown.
You could also have what's called Hawks, which is a hybrid, they almost look like a mast arm.
Right.
Where they flash yellow to red for people to stop when people are crossing.
Right.
That would be part of the traffic evaluation, to see if something like that would be warranted.
Yeah, I'm just curious, that's good. Just, it's not just a crosswalk and a sign, you know, it's just...
You could do like Vegas, just have escalators up in every corner.
Didn't we just ask Paul MacHale to put that in in front of Main Street, that we want the flashing lights?
I didn't take part in that vote.
We did, we did. I don't think you want a flashing light down there.
Well, you have to have something that's going to get the attention of the person coming on, coming in traffic. I mean, how else are you going to tell people that they're in the crosswalk?
It could be distracting to, but I agree with Brian's assessment that something needs to be done, it's just, you are taking your life in your own hands.
Okay, no, that's another issue.
Okay. The issue before us tonight is bringing on VHB, and I've had the opportunity, along with Chairman, Mr. Mayo, our town planner, to sit down and have some great meetings with you folks, and I'm really encouraged by the direction that we're heading in. Their marching orders were very clear, you know, we've had many, many years of studies, and those studies have offered up some great recommendations that are being adopted. So I know a lot of folks have said, oh, over the years we've had all these studies, what's come of them? They're being used, and many aspects of the studies have already been implemented in different ways, a lot more, you know, potentially could be now. So I think that ultimately ended up being time and money well spent. But now we're to the point of action, and that's where I'm very excited about it, because there's been a lot of community input, there's been a lot of analysis, but there's not, hasn't been enough of actual digging to get us there. So the timeline, while it's not as fast as I'd like it, I made clear to these folks that I was hoping we'd start yesterday, but I understand there's some planning involved with that. But I think it's, especially by municipal standards, a fairly aggressive timeline, and I'm encouraged by that. And I've often explained it as, rather than just kind of have like a drip, 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 we're going to have a waterfall. So we're going to make a splash, as they've spelled out. We have a great corridor we're talking about through the junction all the way to the lake, and we're talking about segments in terms of, you know, phasing it in so that we're not going to do this massive project over, say, two months' time, but we're going to know, and we're going to have a cohesive vision. I think that's something we've, as I, best as I understand, we've never had as a town. So we're finally going to have, all right, what's the look, what's the feel, what's the aesthetic we're going for? What are we doing to make the improvements that will ultimately generate, you know, the business activity we're looking for downtown here? So I think that this is, you know, such an important economic consideration for us, I think it's such an important quality of life consideration, you know, for us here, you know, talking about walkability and the like. Well, people need, people need places to walk to, and they want to have an environment that's inviting, and you want to walk downtown. So I wholeheartedly support this, I appreciate the commitment and the vision that's already beginning to develop with VHB and Faverman Design, and I think the next component to this, obviously, will be having a dog and pony show, basically, to show businesses and say, this is a commitment that the town is making, you know, to our downtown, are you interested in being a part of this? And so we can partner up with existing businesses, but also a lot of other potential that's out there. So I just wholeheartedly support this, and I think it's such an important part of the work we're doing today.
Thank you.
So I agree with what Ed's saying. I think boards in the past, I've been on them, we haven't had the money to do this. We've talked, we've made some, we made some great suggestions, but we're finally in a place where we do have some money to move forward. With regard to the connectivity in the corridor, area I'd love to see looked at is where our veterans monuments are in that wide-open greens. There has to be a way for us to use that and invite more people in, in a respectful way, but also to invite them in to look at the monuments. I've always said that, you know, we have 8,000 "do not touch" signs there, which I think does not allow people to walk and view it. And I would love to see something, and I've seen other towns do this, Bedford being one, just that green area that is an empty space if you're at the lake and isn't inviting, and you cannot see the downtown because of the rockery, and to have that draw people in, for us to do something, still respecting the monuments, without a doubt, but make it more interactive, so. Thank you. Great idea. So excited.
So I share everyone's enthusiasm on us moving forward. We have a very large scope of work that we're proposing from the junction all the way up to the lake. As we move forward, though, I just want to make sure that I fulfill part of my obligation to the people that I've talked to. Many still want to be a part of the project going in. I know that for the past three to four years, the Main Streets Organization has been working along the same lines, they're seeking to be part of this. I know that the business owners, the property owners, there might be business owners, the property owners want to know what changes that design may have on their property, as well as what VHB may be able to bring in. I think you need to bring them in early instead of later, okay? It may not have to be a full-blown forum, but they need to be involved, okay? It's their property, so we can't really say, listen, we're making these changes, you have to just do what we're asking you to do. It doesn't work that way typically, okay? So they want to be involved. So I'm going to ask that when we do move forward, that consideration is given to the property owners and to other organizations that have been working towards achieving this, but as Ann eloquently said, we just didn't have the money back then, okay? So, I mean, a lot of people have put a lot of time and effort into this, okay? Two, three years ago, we tried to present the same Albion Street, the money wasn't there, okay? We may have a little bit of money now, I know that Ed is a strong proponent of bringing this forward, there's a lot of us that have that desire as well, too. It's just that we want to make sure it's as transparent as possible, I'm going to use that term, okay? I have all the faith in the word in both of you on bringing something before us that we're going to be able to work with, and I look forward to that, you know, presentation and moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I just want to add one thing.
Yes.
So thank you for this presentation, and I would echo what everyone said, the money and property owners and business folks, and then I would just say, the residents, the people that were actually doing this were. And so when we did the Albion Street study, they had great participants from the residents, and families with kids and elderly and across the board. And I would just encourage that, because at the end of the day, it's important to have property owners and businesses on board, but more important are the residents and the people who are choosing to move to Wakefield. And I love the idea of pop-up parks and pop-up businesses. I actually was with a friend from DC, and she was asking if, you know, we had done that yet in Wakefield.
It's really sort of a best practice, I think, around the country.
Any other questions from the board?
I think we're just going to move forward. I'm not so sure, we need a motion.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, both of you, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure we'll see you soon.
Absolutely.
Based on that schedule, you will.
Okay, bond approval, of general obligation bond anticipation notes, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Mayo.
Yes, in front of you for approval tonight are the bond anticipation notes for $10,102,42 worth of bonds. These bonds represent items that have already been voted on by town meeting, including the Walton School, the two fire trucks, drainage improvements, and the final piece of the Galvin puzzle. As the board may recall, is that we had actually went out and borrowed all over $3 million on the Galvin School at the last end, because we didn't know what they were going to give us back, we're going to reimburse 54% of it, so we had the final audit, so the final portion of the Galvin bond is about $1.7 million, so we did get back what we thought we were going to get back on the Galvin School. That's already all been through. So what happens is, we go out for bond bids, and we work with our company, First Southwest, and we do have the highest rating available under standard and pause, which means that we go out to bid, and, you know, we go to Wall Street, and Wall Street decides, you know, who's going to bid on lending money to Wakefield, kind of like opposite of you going to a bank, you go out, it's like lendingtree.com, and five banks vote on you. So we had actually six financial entities want to bid on this bond package, and at the end of the day, we have a net interest cost of 1.02%, which isn't too shabby. And the reason why we got that is what happens is, on bonds, is the coupon rate is actually 2%, and I'll be reading the motion in a second, but what happens is, they actually pay us premiums. So if you go in and get a mortgage and you pay points, it's kind of different in bonding, is that they actually paid us about a point back on the bond. So it actually worked out very well. So if there aren't any questions, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to read the motion, and we can take it from there.
Any questions from...
Hey, Steve, any other interesting, you know, covenants or conditions that affect your decision in the, in this, in the bond bid? Or is it all just, you know, terms and conditions basically the same, and the rate is really, does it all come down to price, or is it...
It all comes down to really what is the lowest interest cost.
Yeah, and nobody require, you know, I'll go deeper, but require you to carry some reserves or something crazy, or, you know...
No, no, they all, what we actually do is, we have a, what's called a surveillance call with, in this case, standard and pause, and they actually put a package out there with our financials, and they talk about it, and I think I shared that with the board, they talk about our strengths and weaknesses and what have you, and then based on that prospectus, that goes out. And then we get, you know, four, or five, six, seven, 10, you know, entities bid on us, and then we actually work with Peter Fraser and First Southwest, which is now Hilltop Securities, he's been in here a few times in front of the board, and then he goes through and he says, hey, the money's all green, take the lowest rate.
Okay, that's...
And that's really what we do. There's no extra requirement for reserves or anything, no. We actually set the terms, and everyone bids on those.
That's what I was wondering, how prescriptive you are, yeah, okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Okay, I would like to have a motion to approve the sale of $10,102,42 of 2% general obligation bond anticipation notes of the town dated October 5th, 2017, payable October 5th, 2018, so we'll be back and we'll do this in a permanent standard, to Eastern Bank at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $98,898.99. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice sale and preliminary official statement dated September 15th, 2017, and a final official statement dated September 21st, 2017, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the board of selectmen be and hereby authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12, in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders from the notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post-insurance federal tax compliance per... federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and bond council deemed sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the notes. Further voted that each member of the board of selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. And that's the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo.
Thank you.
Do you want to address?
Yep, and I wanted to say on this, all of those items that, and I think they're going around for signature tonight, these are the same, that's the same exact language with dates and numbers changed that we've done many times in front of the board. I know it's a lot to think about and what have you, but this is part of our process that we built, the Dahlberg School, the Woodville School, the Galvin Middle School, town hall improvements, the fields out here at the high school, so this is the exact procedure and it's all been approved by bond council. Thank you very much. Speaking of bonds, the treasurer also dropped off this today payment in some of our existing bonds. So I would like the board to approve the transfer of $2348,338.38 from the town's capital projects account at the savings bank to the town's general fund so that the following bonds can be paid on October 15th, the year 2017. Woodville School, $996,000 of principal and $56,072.25 of interest. Senior Center, $103,000 of principal, $5,440.50 of interest. Dahlberg, $469,000 of principal, $18,474.75 of interest. Woodville, $30,000 of principal, $1,066.50 worth of interest. Galvin, $475,000, $194,284.38 of interest, for total of $273,000 of principal and $275,338.38 of interest.
I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Questions?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. And again, these are all part of our regular financial plan. The reason why this was sprung on you tonight is that these are actually due on October 15th. We will not have a meeting before then, so the treasurer ran that over today, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on with our next agenda item, Experience Wakefield Spookacular.
Oh, okay. This is my night to talk, I guess. So anyways, the Wakefield merchant groups and the Chamber of Commerce last, I think it's maybe a couple of years now, have done what I would consider is an old-fashioned Halloween, or what they consider an old-fashioned Halloween on Albion Street. And they've kind of refined this, that they really are looking for a request to close Albion Street from Main to North Ave and that Foster Street be closed from Richardson to Albion. We've met with the police and fire on this. And on a shutdown from 12 to 5:00 PM on October 29th, 2017, that is a Sunday, and the event will be from 2 to 4:00. And this is a kind of a family event for ages, really newborns to age 13. Think of those old-fashioned Halloween parties that we may have had years ago. I will tell you that, there will be no candy given out by any of the merchants at this event. This was actually something that the mothers group is very involved in this, too, and they did not want the candy. So it wasn't me, it was the mothers' group, and that's what they want to do. They figured they'd get enough candy otherwise. And there is actually no cost to the town because the group, the Chamber of Commerce actually pays for all of the details that we have. So it's a great event, we had it last year with no issues, so I would suggest that we do this again.
I have a question. And I will not ask the candy question, my eyes roll back in my head, but the closing of Albion Street, did we close it last year?
Yes.
Close Main Street, too.
And it's on a Sunday.
And businesses are okay?
No, they're all involved in it.
It's their event.
It's their event, yeah.
It's their event.
It's their event, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
And last year, we did actually close Main because there was some confusion and some Main Street businesses got involved in it. This year, none of the Main Street businesses wanted to be involved in it at all, so it's kind of compacted. I think it's a little bit easier for the young families that are coming.
It was very successful last year.
Very successful, yeah.
It's my memory.
And this is the merchants' event, it's nice that they bring this forward, they want to do it, so.
I have a motion to authorize the Experience Wakefield Spookacular and the closing of Albion Street.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is gifting of a new fence at Beasley Field to the town of Wakefield from the Wakefield Soccer Association. Again, a motion to accept the gift?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, and any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Request from the Knights of Columbus to have the annual charity Tootsie Roll Drive from October 5th, 2017 through October 9th, 2017. Motion?
So moved.
I have a question.
Second, any other questions?
Second, and a question.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Why do we have to authorize that? Does it matter? I mean, great, do it, but why do we have to do that?
I will tell you.
It comes up every year.
Yeah, because they will actually be in the street. This is the boom, you know, they go in the street and they go and collect and the cars are stopped around. So actually, you're allowing activity.
I just received the thing every year. You know what? Maybe saving my stuff, but all right.
Any further discussion?
I approve.
All in favor?
Is there a specific location?
They'll be at the major intersexes.
Yeah. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes.
Next item, request from Lucid BB Memorial Library to accept and expend the gift or gifts to the library in the amount of $6,985 from various donors with banks.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Transfer of $1 million to the debt service capital needs account. Mr. Mayo?
Yes, this is again, one of those housekeeping items. Every year when we do our bonding and our payments, we actually have a million dollars of the tax levy that automatically comes right off the top and is appropriated to our bond payments. That was done by special legislation, I want to think in 1998, and that kind of set that whole debt service schedule. So although we don't vote on that at town meeting, the selectmen do have to transfer it from one account to another. So what I'm asking here tonight is to transfer a million dollars from the general fund to the debt service capital needs account so John McCarthy can pay those bills that we just talked about.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. While reviewing signing, Mr. Longo, all set?
Just various bills, vet obligations, you know, school supplies and maintenance, vehicle maintenance, you know, roof pumps for DPW. What's great to see is that we use as much local vendors as we, you know, we can use. So it's a good thing for us in the town.
Thank you, Ms. Longo. On to the next item, matters not anticipated by the chairman within the last 48 hours of the meeting. We will start with Mr. Dombrowski.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Two things. First, I want to recognize Mr. Mayo for keeping our financial house in order. I know it's a team effort along with, you know, finance committee and accountant, and to continue to have this AAA bond rating enables us to, you know, save a lot for the taxpayers and also enables us to do a lot, so thank you for that. And I also want to recognize my colleague, Vice Chairman May, the rededication of the dog park this past Saturday. It's a great addition to our town, and I know that, you know, in walking around, there are so many dogs in this town and it's a great opportunity. So on behalf of the pet parents and the four-legged children of them, thank you for that. And also that mulch is just incredible. It compacts like.
It's great mulch. You can really get your hands deep into it.
Absolutely.
You don't want to go too deep in the dog park. Good stuff.
But I know you worked hard on that and thank you for bringing that to the town.
Who's the board? The board. But thank you.
Mr. Longo.
I am, the Stonem Boys and Girls Club are having their annual gala this Friday night and I'm really looking forward to attending. They've done a lot for the town of Wakefield and a lot for, you know, the younger residents of the town, and congratulations Stonem Boys and Girls Club, and again, looking forward to it Friday night.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Falvey.
Glad to be here.
Glad to have you.
I think I'm all set.
Can I take a picture?
I'll just say mine. So we're all set with Linfield, obviously, that's all done, we locked that down. Nice job doing it.
Yes, that has actually been signed by everybody, including the MWRA, and that agreement said 30 days from the final execution, we would get our money, so October 15th, I think, is the date.
Do you think people in this town understand what was done there?
Actually, a lot of people have commented on and thanked the board for their standing tough.
I was looking for thanks from the board, but I just want to pull it out.
Yes, I think they do that.
Okay, good. All right. Otherwise, I think I come good. Thanks.
Mr. May?
I want to thank Selectman Dombrowski for bringing that dog park up. We did have a ball. I want to thank Steve Mayo for targeting that land that we owned anyway, so it didn't cost the town any money, and it also looks a heck of a lot better than it did if you remember the priors. We had the before and after pitches in the fall when we first voted on it, 10, 12, and then it was in motion 12, 10, people were out there with the dogs, and it's come a long way. On a less positive note about dogs, I love dogs, but I've been getting calls about the Forests Gate Cemetery again, where people are bringing their dogs into the cemetery, which is not a good idea. Whatever the reason, even if it's a therapy dog, it's, in general, you really have to be sensitive about therapy dogs, but most of these dogs I'm hearing about are, you know, attached to baby carriages with the mothers, and I get the whole safety in the cemetery, but, and to see loved ones, but you have to be careful about folks that don't want dogs in the cemetery with their loved ones. So it's a sensitive issue and kind of balances out the positive dog park today, but getting calls on that, excuse me, it's a tough one to, we have a sign inside, about 30, 40 feet in, and we don't want to have to put a sign outside, and I talked to Town Administrator Steve Mayo about it, and it's a sensitive issue and I just want people to be aware they should be considerate for others and not bring their dogs to the dog park, I mean, to the dog park, sorry, yes. Bring them to the dog park, not to the cemetery, sorry. Too much excitement about the grand opening again. But just, yeah, be sensitive about that and that's something you should, all right, go ahead, Sid. Bring them to the dog park and not to the cemetery.
I'm not saying go there, sir.
Okay.
I'm waiting for you to finish.
My air. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you.
It just turned officially to fall, and just a little reminder that the Board of Health is offering flu clinics, so Farmer's Market 10 to 12 this weekend, go get your flu shot. And there's some other dates that are all online, but get your flu shots if you can. Just to piggyback what you said, Peter, we cannot prevent service animals from going into the cemetery, so they get free run of anything. And most owners of service animals are very respectful. Update on the hockey rink, the drafting of the RFP has become more complicated than we initially thought, and in fact, other towns that weren't as careful had to put it out to rebid, which we do not want to do. So spending a little more time drafting that RFP, we had hoped very aggressively to have it on the November town meeting. I don't think that ever was going to really be an option, so it'll be in the spring of 2018 barring anything extraordinary. I've also talked to a lot of Wakefield residents who have family in Puerto Rico that have not yet been able to contact them. Some are getting through right the past day or so, but others are not, and these are our residents who are trying to contact family. So just sending, you know, love and in good thoughts to our own residents who have been struck by that devastation.
Thank you. Let's go down to Mr. Longo.
I had drafted a town meeting article to rename the board the Town Council. I'm going to pass this out now, not looking for any comment, obviously, at this meeting, but you will have to vote on it at the next meeting to put it on the, I'm sorry.
Did this already go out to?
I did send an email as well, but that's okay. Let me just point out, though, that I cannot be at the next meeting on October 16th because that's Linfield's Fall Town Meeting Night. So if you have any questions, concerns, suggestions, please call or email me, and if you use email, please don't email other selectmen, you know, to avoid open meeting law issues. Hopefully, we can all be on the same page about this by the time of the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Longo. Mr. Mayo?
Just a couple of quick things, Mr. Chairman. I had spoken to the board, or actually sent out in my town administrator notes at the end of August, about ongoing discussions, basically with Reading regarding exploring the possibility of building a joint DPW facility. Both communities need to upgrade their facilities. Both communities have facilities that are in areas that actually could be redeveloped economically. Both are problematic. Ours is a little bit small and near a school, but there may be some, certainly some opportunities there that may lend itself not to having a DPW garage in the middle of town. It appears that the site of a joint facility would be a lot less than building two standalone facilities for Wakefield and Reading. So we are looking at Camp Curtis as a centralized location. We can see there's a lot of hoops to carry if this ever happens, but we are, again, trying to work collaboratively with one of our close neighbors and close friends. We are working through the state Division of Capital Asset and Management. So you may be hearing more about this and may be asking some of you to maybe join me if there's any tours or what have you to look at it. I know a number of you over the years have been to either meetings or actually gone up there and looked around. It's really an interesting sight and, like, government moves very slowly. I know that some of you don't like that, like Selectman Dombrowski, but we're working on this very carefully and this has the state involved, so.
And that's, they fix trucks up there. I mean, they have a massive garage, that's what they do.
Must be 30 days.
It's humongous. It would be like the best DPW location in the entire state.
Is it just state or federal as well?
It's federal.
It's really managed more by the state, but there will be some federal help as well. It's kind of a very nebulous area. So we'll be looking at that. We are working with our state delegation and federal delegation also helping with that. I know that Jay Ash at the state, our good friend, is very supportive of this idea, wants to be brought in. I think the governor's office is very supportive, so also, our own DPW garage, at some point, we're going to have to do something, we're going to have to fish a cut bait here, so I wanted to get that out there for the community to even hear about it, to get moving. I know the board has heard rumblings, and they're going to have a similar statement at Reading's Board of Selectmen's meeting, I think tomorrow night, on the same thing. So just wanted it out there, didn't want people to be surprised, but I know you guys had known. The only other thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is that tomorrow night at the Stonem Theater, Senator Lewis is having a community conversation, and it's talking about investing in arts and culture to strengthen our local economies. And he's including members of the MAPC, members of the Albion Cultural Exchange. He also asked me to attend, but he did not include me on the advertisements, so I don't know what that means, but I guess I'll be on the panel, that's okay. But I think it is interesting that we're getting noticed for things that we're doing and commitments that this board has taken to make the town better, so I do appreciate that support, and I will report back on how that goes tomorrow night. If anybody wants to go, it's at the Stonem Theater tomorrow night at 6:30. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. I just have a couple of items of curiosity as to where we stand, but I know that we set aside any involvement with Terrant Lane. Do you have any new numbers as to how high that's on?
No, that was the high bid that I mentioned. I think it was 3.6 million.
A lot of them.
Yeah.
A lot of them. Do you have an update as to when we will be meeting with our reps on the, regarding the loopholes? Again, second.
They have asked to come in, as I mentioned to you, with House and Human Services. I think it's an afternoon meeting. I think I had secured the date with you in October.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if you wanted to invite maybe a couple of the homeowners and certainly members of the board. But it's not going to be a big public forum. They're not willing to do that at this point.
Very good. And the only other thing is, we, this board on August 14th voted to adopt a, in addition to the mass emotion walking routes throughout the town and established the go the extra mile component to it. So what we're trying to do on this Saturday, 9 o'clock, we're going to ask people who will be interested in going that extra mile around the lake and converting their 5K walk into a 7K walk, to meet at the lake, and we will bring them into the downtown. This is going to be a promotion where we are going to ask, try to tell people that it's a healthy endeavor to go the extra, additional steps for your, for your own good, but it's also going to bring a lot of traffic into the downtown, and I think that goes to what a lot of us have spoken to already. How do we get people from the lower common to, into the upper common, and then continue them into downtown? I know that we are all looking at a long term as to what we can offer them once they do get into the town. That will come. This is a start, I believe, and I think this is going to get us to that end game, where if we develop that one loop, it's going to bring more people into the downtown, and it's only going to be a benefit for all of us in a positive way. So those are my only items that I have at this point in time. If there's any other questions right now or concerns, Mr. Falvey?
Move or adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, because we have a second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, and good night, everyone.